We rush to have the discussion with, but rather, you know, over the, over the course of the next few weeks and months, keep an eye on in terms of the progress of the reconciliation with the.
So you worship, what kind of direction should we have then? Woodward, who made the motion, might we read his notes because to find the missing words. But would it be more appropriate to refer this to staff because it now doesn't, it's not a corroborative. Motion to the one we passed earlier.
Thank you. Counselor Woodward, I'm going to turn it over to you because I know you presented this wording. I think the idea is that they can continue to have some discussions. I know that nothing concrete can be done until there's actually some.
Yeah, I mean, it feels, it feels like a great swell of English here. I mean, I think we people know the intent of the motion here, which is that, you know, the whole discussions, what that's going to look like if it proceeds. I think you could, we could certainly amend it. So the benefits of this project, if the decision to proceed with the expansion, blah, 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 multiple community plans is confirmed by council or something like, or is, I don't, I don't think there's a big crisis here. I think the intent is clear and I, I think the idea was that these discussions could occur simultaneously with the ALC process, which is a version of what the.
Perhaps adding the words to go concurrent with the LC process. Does that make sense at the end?
Yes, that's your worship. It wasn't me speaking. I think it was.
Counselor Richter.
I had no problems with the wording of this motion. I think the intent is clear. And I think it should just stand. That's what we passed at CPC and that's what's back here on the table to be adopted.
I think staff have direction from us.
You wanted to add in is successful at the end. That could be added in.
I think staff have direction to keep this on the radar and to work. I think they can certainly have some discussion preliminary discussions, but obviously some standard discussions is really, you're not going to start the heavy duty negotiation until there's something there to negotiate. So I'm going to call the question on it.
Well, your worship, can we just add those words? Because it does not make sense the way it is.
Okay, so if you want, if you want to recommend an amendment, counsel on.
Yeah, so at the end, what was the wording? Somebody said to add something at the end because.
Into, okay, counselor.
It is successful.
Right.
If success or to run concurrently with the.
No, if.
LC application. Do you want to, so counsel on, do you wish to make an amendment?
I think we have to. I mean, it may be fine if they we understand.
To run concurrently with the ALC application.
Yeah, so there's.
Mr. Mayor, where is this running concurrently coming from?
Well, then it's can start, it can run as they're, as they're waiting, not waiting for two years for this thing to happen. We get some idea of what kind of amenities will be coming before that. That's, that would be the amendment. And it can be voted down if you don't.
Okay, can we hear that then? So this is, this is now an amendment, right?
The amendment would be a multiple community plan amendment at the end of after amendments.
Is successful.
And these discussions to run concurrently with the ALC application. Current to ALC application. You want to move that?
Yep.
Is there a second or? Counselor Davis, okay, on the amendment. I'm going to call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Richter opposed amendment carries. So back to the main motion as amended. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel long opposed. It carries. Thank you. Move on to K five. And that's the council process recommended motion that we direct staff to begin working on, bring forward consideration amendment to existing policies. Our new policy regarding community benefit contributions, future commercial lands. Counsel Richter moves it. Is there a second or? Counsel Davis, discussion, call the question. All those in favor.
Wording issues here too, because it seems like this action is directing staff to come. I guess there is the word council consideration, but.
Yeah, it's for, it's for a consideration. Yeah.
I would like to see the word potential in there too, because I don't think it was decided that we're going to impose these fees. It was, it's a discussion to talk about whether fees should be put in. Is that not right? So I think.
Well, it's what we discussed in, as I recall, in the council process committee is to look at this. So I think this does give staff the direction to come back with something for us to consider.
So that means it's been, it's been decided here that we're going to be adding these amenity charges to industrial and commercial is the way.
We still have to see what they come back with.
Well, it sure looks like direction to come back with the changes. I'd make a, I'll propose an amendment that the word potential be inserted there.
For it for.
Consideration, potential amendment to existing policies.
Well, it's the same thing because it's still going to come. Something has to be potential.
Well, can we ask that? Because to me, if I was staff, it would say, okay, we're coming back for new bylaws for council to consider, whereas I, I thought we were going to ask staff to give us some suggestions on some potential changes or maybe none. Maybe, I think we should find out from staff what they're hearing.
Mr. Saffy.
Your worship. The, the, I guess the, the topic will come back to council. Staff had planned to present that based on previous council direction. And we hope to be able to do that before the summer break, before August, in one of the July meetings for council's consideration. So I don't.
It's already in process. Yeah.
I'm sorry?
It's already in process is what you're saying.
It's in process. That's correct. So, yeah, I, I really can't add too much to the, the current amendment that's being discussed.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I think the use of the word potential is redundant and I think that we need staff to bring us back something solid for consideration. We either accept it or we don't.
They're doing counsel on.
Yeah, well, I, I'm very concerned because staff are already working on a report.
We're debating, we're debating something that hasn't been seconded.
Excuse me, I, but your worship, do, do I not have the floor when you let me meet because.
Let me back up a little bit. It's getting late. Let me back up a little bit. Ms. Bauer, was this moved in second? I'd rather get it on the floor. Counsel, counsel on, can you just hold on for half a sec? I thought it was moving second. Counsel or Ms. Bauer, was it moved seconded or not?
No, sir, it was not seconded.
So let's get a motion on the floor that we can deal with. So somebody would like to move this. K five, counsel Davis, is there a second or?
Oh, K five, K five was moved and seconded as Richter and Davis. It's Long's amendment to add the word potential and he moved.
No, I was talking about the main motion. So Ms. Bauer said it wasn't. Ms. Bauer.
No, I'm sorry, sir. I thought you were talking about the amendment.
No, that's.
The motion itself was moved.
Okay, thank you. That's.
So thanks, your worship. So yeah, we discussed the amendment. It didn't have a second and that's fine, but I'm just wondering why we would have a motion. If staff have told us several times now that they are already preparing a report to come back to council. I, I think at the council priorities meeting, we thought this was, this would be a cor- corroborative, if that's the word, or supportive motion, but I don't see that it is because this to me gives direction to come back with that. And I thought that the staff were going to come back with a report on other best practices and other situations in the region that we could talk about. So and, and if staff are doing that, which they've told us several times they are, why would we need this?
Which they are, and this motion doesn't change that. So I don't see a problem with the motion. Counsel Woodward.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to, so was the amendment for potential? Okay, so I just wanted to note that. So we're not amending the word potential into a potential process. Okay.
I think Jack froze.
Oh, we've lost Jack.
I think Jack froze, froze.
Yeah, this is a zoom.
It's a black hole. It's a black hole.
Let's all start telling dirty jokes while he's gone.
Oh, no. Where's the mayor?
He's disappeared. Remember, we're still in public.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I cleaned.
You know, mud getting on your shirt. That's what he means by dirty. So I guess we'll be quiet until the mayor comes back.
The mayor is in process of reloading. Just one moment.
Hi, Jack. Welcome back.
I'm back. I, you know, for a while there, I thought, man, I go, you're not in this motion. Nobody was opposed. But then nobody was moving either. So I'm going to call the question again. All those in favor.
No, no, I'm, I was in the middle of trying to speak.
Oh, okay, that's probably when it got frozen. So I thought you're finished.
Yeah, so no. I'm not going to support this because there is a community benefit to industrial and, and employment lands. I thought that staff were going to come back with their own report, talking about potential things that could be done with OCP amendments and so forth. But this, this motion to me changes it substantially. I know that you didn't agree with me, your worship, and maybe council, of course, doesn't, does not often agree with me anyway. But this does, to me, gives some fairly firm direction that we want to apply community benefit contributions to employment lands and commercial lands. And I don't agree with that. So I will not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will now call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Counsel long opposed. It carries. Thank you. I'm going to go to the mayor's report and see if staff want to bring up any slides that they have. All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. It's been a long day. We're actually, good evening, everyone, and welcome. We've had to go through a lot of discussion throughout our meetings. So I'm just going to go through briefly what, what occurred over the last couple of weeks. On June 18th, I participated in the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce's Coffee and Conversation segment. Topics included economic development, post pandemic homelessness, the 2021 budget safety in our community, and the township's arts and cultural plan. Each year, our two volunteer appreciation award recipients presented their awards on June, sorry, this year, I should say, on June 22nd. Congratulations to Barb Jackman, winner of the 2020 Eric Flowerdew Volunteer Award and Annika Carney, winner of the 2020, 2021 Pete Swenson Outstanding Community Youth Award. So congratulations to our great volunteers who are always so humble and they, they represent all the great volunteers we have in the township of Langley. Since 2006, Barb has spent over 10,000 hours volunteering with the Langley Hospital Society's Second Story Treasures thrift store in Walnut Grove. Described as a vibrant and committed volunteer, Barb truly invests herself in the mission, vision, and values of the Langley Hospital Society. The thrift store helps raise more than 30% of the Langley Hospital Society's annual operating budget. And Barb's can-do attitude and positive demeanor are a huge factor in that number. Thank you, Barb, for caring for others, for making such a positive impact in our community. Annika used her passion for basketball to make a positive impact in her community. Selected as a member of the Special Olympics BC First Youth Engagement Project. Carney initiated the idea for an inclusive basketball training and event, event for students with intellectual disabilities. Through a grant from the Special Olympics BC, she developed an introductory basketball event that welcomed 40 students with intellectual disabilities from local schools. Additionally, Annika coached basketball at two elementary schools and has also worked with children through volunteering at day camps with the Township of Langley and the North Langley Community Church. Annika also is a model student achieving academic average of 94%. Thank you, Annika, for your commitment. You certainly are an outstanding community youth. Also, on June 22nd, I met with the indigenous leaders to discuss the exhibits and programs for Salishon Place by the river. It was productive discussion and I'm excited to watch Salishon Place come together and enhance our community. For those that aren't sure, that's the new museum in Fort Langley that will be under construction soon. The Rotary Club of Langley Central organized a frontline staff celebration at the Langley Memorial Hospital on June 23rd. Township of Langley firefighters and I were honored to attend horns blaring to provide our support and gratitude to those who have been working tirelessly on the front lines during this pandemic. Heartfelt thank you to everyone who helped us get through this pandemic and certainly was great to see the nurses and doctors and the first responders, police and fire and ambulance drivers attending this. And thank you to the Rotary Club for, for honoring them with a medal. On June 25th, I attended the Langley Community Services Society's Celebration of Filipino Heritage Month. Canada's home to nearly 1 million people of Filipino descent and is one of the fastest growing communities in Canada. This celebration showcased their heritage and cultural through a short video presentation and live songs. On June 26th, counselors between Arneson, Blair Whitmarsh and myself attended the Panther Hoops Basketball Society's grand opening. Panther Hoops is a great nonprofit which serves ba- basketball players' volatilities and builds the complete player from skills to academics. And we all got a chance to try and get the ball through the hoop and none of us did. All need to go back to camp, training camp. In the event of June 26th, I attended the Rotary Club of Alderbrook's induction ceremony. Actually, I didn't. There was one and I couldn't make it. But congratulations to the new executive team. Your volunteer efforts are very much appreciated in our community. And also attended by council, on June 22nd, counsel long participated in a regional call with Ministers Osborne and Eevee to discuss shared goals around housing and the barriers local governments currently face. And just this morning, counsel long helped announce that the township received a grant of, of over $2 million to fund an upgrade and expansion of the WC Blair Recreation Center. We thank the provincial and federal governments for the generous contributions to our community. So that, that's my, my report and counsel on, if you'd like to add anything.
Yeah, just briefly on that meeting with Minister Osborne, I do have a notice of motion I'm going to bring at the end of the meeting because she is encouraging us by saying that legislation is certainly coming momentarily from the provincial government that when the provincial health emergency is lifted, that local governments will be going back to in-person meetings, but also be able to and be encouraged to, to keep online submissions happening too. So she didn't just say, hey, this is something that may or may not happen. She really actually stressed that we should be encouraged to amend our bylaws and move forward accordingly. As far as the announcement on the pool, it was my pleasure to be there, your worship, and I don't know where the check for $2 million is, is at the moment, but it's on its way. And when it does arrive, the, the fitness center and other facilities will be improved. It did show a picture of the pool, but actually it's going to be the doubling of the fitness center space and some amendments. The steam room, which of course we need real quick. Steam, probably cooler in the steam room than it is outside. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Counsel Richter.
I have something for the Metro Vancouver report. Is that?
Go ahead right now. That's fine. Yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to advise council that Metro Board approved the Met, well, it's not really, they approved the process for consultation on Metro 2050 with the member municipalities. And I have requested our staff to please arrange that presentation as soon as practical. Also, the tree, Metro's tree regulation toolkit is available. And I think that council should probably ask to get a copy of that, maybe a presentation as well. And then the CIO, the commissioner pointed out that on June 24th, so that was the day before our board meeting. Metro had, was already using 1.52 billion liters of water a day. That was on Thursday. Can you imagine how many billions of liters were used over the last three days? So he has asked us to please encourage our residents to be as conserving as possible of water during high peak periods. Normally, the peak period demand is 1.5 liters, billion liters per day. And we're already over that. So it could be a lot more before the summer's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson, from Liquid Waste.
Yeah, that was, missed our director, Mr. Dobroboni, I would think, Counsel Richter. I, we, no, I just wanted to say, I wanted to come in as well as I was down at the ceremonial fire that the Quandlin First Nation had on behalf of the children who were found. And it was a very spiritual and sad event. And I want to thank them for having that. And now we've got some other ones. So we were living through a difficult time, Mr. Mayor, with findings of children and from Aboriginal, from indigenous schools at the time. So anyway, we've got a prior way through this, work with, with our communities and with our residents and indigenous community. So I wanted to point that out, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So now we'll move on to items from prior meetings and the following council process committee recommendation motions were deferred to June, at the June 14th meeting. So N1 is a motion to, that came from counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'd like to move it and I'd also like to propose an amendment after there's a second.
Okay, did you want to move it with your amendment?
Oh, sure. If that's all right. And the amendment would be after the candidate's name to insert the phrase and slash or symbol and financial agent authorization.
Sorry, the candidate's name and financial authorization is, is mandatory.
Financial agent authorization.
Okay, so if you don't move that, that's fine.
Just for the.
Is there a second or? Is there a second or?
I think counsel.
Counsel Davis? Yeah, thank you.
Speak to it, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counsel Richter.
Council had a very robust discussion on this. My preference originally was to have eight signs and eight roads that the eight signs could be put on per candidate. We've brought that up to 100 signs. I think that's more than fair per candidate. And that would be signs with their names, their, and/or their symbols and their financial agent authorization. And that should help control some of the sign pollution that residents are very concerned about during an election period. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I'm not going to support this. I have a number of reasons. One is I, I, I think the last election was a very long period of time and that's not really a, an election that we should be basing our rules upon. We now are limiting to 21 days. So I think that already limits the number of signs. We already have a number of rules in place about where you can place signs in, in cul-de-sacs, or sorry, not cul-de-sacs, roundabouts, intersections and so forth. So we have already a number of limitations. I also think that we, we don't choose to limit other, other ways of candidates promoting themselves. And I think we should do the best we can to allow candidates to promote the way they want to. They are all limited by financial matters anyways. And we should be allowing people to promote themselves the best way that they see fit for themselves and not to limit necessarily that. And probably the final reason is that I just think from a practical point of view, it's very difficult to monitor these 100 signs. How many you have for bylaws to be sent out, trying to count signs in a very large township. So for all of those reasons, I will not be supporting this, this bylaw.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Mayor, I've got an amendment to this when you're, when you're done with the speakers.
Okay, I'll go to counsel on.
I guess I'd be curious to hear the amendment, but I'm not going to support this either for some of the reasons that have been stated. And I, and I guess I, I wrote down in my notes, you know, what is democracy? And democracy is, we live in a free world and we're allowed to elect whoever we feel is appropriate to elect and use whatever means perhaps that can be done with. But more importantly, there's no mention here of where, what properties we're going to be limiting these signs to. If I'm, if I'm reading it correctly, it doesn't say whether it's private or public lands. And so therefore, as I imagine, it's assuming that this would be limited on private lands. And I can't think of anywhere in the free world where we would say to a private individual, a citizen, that they can or cannot place a sign on their property for whatever candidate they support during an election. To me, that is not democracy. So for reasons mentioned, I'm not supporting it. But most importantly, there's no way that I will be part of any bylaw that says to somebody, sorry, Mrs. Jones, you can't put up that sign because you're, there's already 100 up somewhere else and you're not allowed to put the number 101 up for whoever it is that she supports.
Thank you. Counsel Kuntz.
Yeah, I'm not supportive either. I think it really gives an advantage to incumbent. So and I, I, you know, it would be really, you know, easy for us to sit here and, and make it a little bit more difficult for other people to, to take our seat. So, you know, I want to be fair to everybody. I, I also don't want our bylaws, people, they have so much, you know, to do, to be counting signs. And then, you know, if, if somebody's deciding that, you know, well, they don't like a certain candidate, so they're going to toss a few of those signs and, and maybe, you know, I, I just see a lot of situations that could come up that, you know, could create a huge mess. And, you know, I agree, like the last election, I think it was six weeks. It was way too long. So we've, you know, amended that. And I think we've made some, some other, I think some of those other rules come into play. So it makes it a little bit easier. So I'm not going to support this.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, it, and I think it's 100, they're four by, four by four signs or whether they're 16.
That's 100 signs. There's another motion on.
It doesn't, yeah, 100 signs that, but there is a 16 cubic feet or whatever, no, square feet. Okay, so the thing is, um, it's funny, I don't think it, it, it gives an advantage to the incumbents because if incumbents are usually the ones that have the most signs, I believe. That's my understanding over the years. So I think it, it gives everyone a bit of a fair playing field and new people, it actually gives them a, a good start because sometimes new people can't put up 1,000 signs or something. So 100 is good. I actually think also that you know, some communities don't have signs at all. So there was a question about certainly other than on certain properties. And I think that question came up of democracy. And also, we're not the only ones to do this. Other communities, I know Maple Ridge for sure, but other communities as well do this. So I don't think we're doing anything out, out of the ordinary or restricting democracy. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, oh, counsel Davis has spoken. Counsel Davis?
Yes, you know what? I agree with Counselor Ferguson. There's been some really good points made. If we limit it to 100, then incumbents can put 100 up and new runners can put 100 up. And I think it doesn't get so sloppy. You know, the word democracy, even it comes with a bunch of rules. So I think I'm going to support it.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counsel Woodward for his amendment.
Yeah, I mean, hearing the debate, the amendment's not going to succeed at all. But I did want also to speak to the motion. I mean, I, I was going to amend the number down. That's, that's clearly not going to go anywhere. For me, the 100 is not enforceable. That's why I was going to, you know, to me, you've got to, got to have an enforceable number. There's no way where, you know, 100 is going to be trackable and it's going to be enforced. So what's going to end up happening in my mind is you're going to have some campaigns that'll put out 100 and some that'll put out a lot more than 100. And having everybody chasing them all down to count up their 100 signs. So I don't see the point of an unenforceable bylaw. That's what I'm seeing here. I think something like 50, 54 by fours is which would have ended up happening or 35 four by fours is plenty of signage, in my opinion. So we're back and, and so, you know, I'm thinking about it now just to push that. But in the end, I think I'll drop it. I think I'll accept the fact here that unless somebody else wants to move that, I'm not going to bother. I don't think 100 is enforceable. So I don't think I'm going to support it either. But I really don't like the fact that we're not really addressing the election signage issue. We don't seem to be able to address it. I think I've seen multiple councils now try to deal with it. And we end up to the point where we just have the landfills littered. We have Murrayville site, you know, piles of signs on the side of the road, people moving signs around, no enforcement. I just don't seem capable of addressing this issue. And I, I totally respect the attempt. And I think on this meeting especially, why do we even have these CPC meetings anymore? If we pass these motions at CPC and they don't survive the council, what is the point of this? So in the end, I'll, I'll still think about it here. But I like the idea of trying to do something about signs. But clearly, we're not going to be able to. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Thank you, worship. I haven't changed my mind since the council process committee. I don't think that our sitting council should be making these decisions. I've said that before and I'll say it again. I think that there is an inherent bias in people that have a vested interest, if you're running next time, to be sitting, making this decision. And I don't think it's a good excuse to say it's too late now. So I hope the very next council that gets elected makes that their first priority, but they get some professional third party opinion to help them out to do this. Because I agree with Counsel Woodward. This is totally not working.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I mean, there's good arguments on both sides, but I think the leveling, the playing field for all candidates is the best argument because some candidates are.
Is the best argument because some candidates are much better at fundraising than other candidates are. And so they can afford to buy a gazillion signs and put them up everywhere. I think there's been a lot of abuses of signs, so it's not good enough to put one up. You have to put twenty up in a location. The public gets annoyed with this. The public, you know, sends us emails about stop with all the signs already. We declared a climate emergency. We've now got a climate action strategy. I just don't see how contributing to the landfill, not to mention the carbon footprint from the creation of these styrofoam or plastic signs. Helps us achieve our goals on climate action or sustainability. I think we need to start somewhere. I like Suri's model. Suri just basically banned them on any public property. You could put them up on private property, but you can't put it up on public property. We had that discussion at CPC. That was voted down. This was a compromise that came up. I'm really disappointed that council is backing away from what I think was a fair and reasonable compromise. So there's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question on. And one, all those in favor? And opposed? Mayor Froze, Council Arneson, Council Whitmarsh, Council Kuntz, Council Long opposed, it fails. Move on to N two, and this is on the size, limit this campaign size to maximum sixteen square feet. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, could quick point of order on clarification on last motion could fail. Where does that leave? There's no signed bylaw now?
It it defaults back to the existing bylaw, which is in existence, there is, it doesn't it doesn't have a number, but it just defaults. There is no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, N two, a motion, please. Somebody, Council Davis, second or? Is there a second? Council Richter seconds it. Uh, Council Richter, go ahead.
Yeah, well, seeing as how we're playing around with the CPC agreements that we all came to. I'd like to put back in the caveat that the sixteen square feet be no more than four by four signs, largest signs. To be put up out there, four by four.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's amended. Okay, so on the amendment, I'll call the question on the amendment. I think we can just go to the.
Hang on a second, hang on a second.
I I think it's a debate. We all know our answers. We're not going to convince anybody.
What are we trying to accomplish here? By by so everything's going to be square?
Yeah, okay, let's just vote on it. We had this discussion. Okay, I'm going to I'm going to call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? And opposed? Okay, so I've got Mayor Froze, Council Whitmarsh, Council Long, Council Kuntz opposed. Amendment carries, so the motion as amended.
Wait a second, I'm sorry, I I can't, how could it have passed?
It passed five to four. Okay, I'm going to call the motion as amended. All those in favor?
No, I'd like to call a recount there.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to read back the ones who are opposed. Unless I got it wrong.
I understood Mayor Froze, Council Whitmarsh, Council Kuntz, and Council Long to be opposed. That would be four.
Okay, so we're back to the main motion as amended. Okay, see hands up. Uh, Council Richter?
No, I forgot.
Okay, Council Woodward?
Yeah, no, I. I think at the very least, if we're if we're not going to restrict the quantity, then at the very least, we should prevent some of these monster ones that we saw. In the last couple of elections. So I think that this is the least we can do, just try to try to decrease and and deal with a more reasonable size than some of these other ones that we've seen. So I I certainly support it and and like the amendment. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion as amended? And opposed? Council Arneson, Mayor Froze, Council Whitmarsh, Council Long, Council Kuntz, motion fails. Move to N three is, anybody like to move N three? Council Woodward and Council Davis seconds. I I would ask, I would add an amendment, or Council Woodward, why don't you speak there? I would add an amendment, maybe you can just. I'll I'll throw this out there. So after the size of political science practically. Including complaint driven, I don't think we'd want to. Eliminate complaint driven.
Yeah, no, I like that. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So if if you wanted to say, you know, if it's.
Yeah, I'll move it that way.
Move it that way, including complaint driven, I can support that. Uh, Council Woodward, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I, this is the one I probably want it the most anyway. People don't want to restrict sizes and they don't want to restrict quantity. Say that, that's totally fine. They don't want to make any changes to bylaws because we're worried about perceptions. That's fine. But what's the one of the biggest issues that's come up now with multiple campaigns is is that people are are just not obeying the bylaw. And then you, you know, campaign volunteers and other people that that want the bylaw followed, you know, report it. Takes a couple of days, people go out there, look at it, the sign comes down, it's back up within half an hour. So, you know, I mean, that this has just turned into a bit of a farce in terms of, you know, some of the people that are experts at at running these sign campaigns. Knowing that there's not going to be, you know, enough resources to chase down every sign. So I would I would like to give staff the authority that if they see a sign. Violating the bylaw that they they pick it up and take it to Murrayville. I think that's the minimum that we can do for the public. That if campaigns are are not able to read the bylaw and file it, that they're kept, their signs should be picked up and taken to Murrayville, and I think it only lasts for a few weeks. And and I think that that's probably the most reasonable thing we can do, as opposed to this padded mouse game with signs showing up at intersections and everything else. All over the township on set schedules and then reappearing after they're removed. I think it's a joke, and and I think the least we can do is enforce the bylaw. Thanks.
Council Long?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think Council Woodward referenced multiple campaigns. I think the only. And and somebody else said, well, actually, Council Woodward also said that we haven't made any changes. I think the biggest change that that we've made. We've all agreed on is that the election period was far too long. Last election, prior elections, it wasn't really that big of an issue. Most candidates will hopefully be respectful. I mean, if you're going to elect somebody, you you hope that they're not going to play shenanigans on it. And staff do pick up signs that are obstructing traffic or or illegally placed, so. But to to say that that they have to go out proactively and be the candidate, the campaign police, I think that's just not a. Good use of, and and the fact that we've reduced it to three weeks, I think will solve all of these problems.
Thank you. Uh, Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah. I I was, I was, it's interesting to to hear the the words that Council Woodward used, because that was different than I was understanding it when I read the motion. I I understood that the way the motion's read that I'm reading it is that we would have bylaw officers be sent out. As part of their job, sent out looking for infractions, driving around trying to find them. But the way that Council Woodward described it was that as a bylaw officer happens to be out, if they happen to see a sign that's. In in the wrong place, that they would just pick it up and take it away. That's quite different. A shift where they go out actively pursuing sign violations. So I I I the way that Council Woodward described it, I'm I would be kind of open with. I'm fine with they see one, but I don't know if I want them spending their day. Driving around trying to find it. So that's that's very different than the way Council Woodward described, and I'm not sure what he's intending by the motion then.
If I could. Perhaps add some light on this. So this, I mean, we we direct staff to enforce, so I think we we did that anyway, so as. But I but I I don't think we want to go as far as to start managing if we're going to be sending them out or not. You know, that can be interpreted differently by the by the. Bylaw managers and how they want to deploy their people, but you know, unless you want to hire a hundred different bylaw officers to do this. I think they'll be using their discretion and they'll be taking this motion if it if it is passed. That that they will enforce placement signs with and meaning it, meaning it's not, they don't have to have a complaint. They'll go out there and enforce it. But if they have the time, I'm sure their management will go and check and check out the signs, but. I don't want to be too prescriptive to staff on how they manage their resources. I think this motion kind of leaves it open enough, so hopefully that helps answer. Your your concern. Okay, we'll move on to Council Richter?
Uh, yes, I just had a query with regards to the wording of this because it says placement and size. We have eliminated size now because N two failed.
No, no, there's still size.
There's still size, yeah.
Oh, sixteen square feet. Oh, okay. And I agree, I I think there's too many people that play sign games during elections. And so in the past, what's happened is our staff have spent time calling the candidates. And the candidates say they'll correct it, and then it doesn't get corrected, and then eventually, I think. I think it should just be corrected immediately, like go pick it up, and if you want your sign, go to the op center and dig it out of the pile there. Because there shouldn't be these games with signs that are going on right now. That's wrong, and and I want to just echo what Councilor Woodward said about. If we're going to change all our decisions at CPC when they get to the council table, why do we even bother having CPC? It's seems like a double use of time.
Thank you. Uh, Council Kuntz?
Yeah, no, I agree. I have no problem with that. In fact, you know. I I I hope it's the same for everybody because, you know, I think placing signs and you have volunteers that place signs. And everybody should be in the know, and I wouldn't want anybody to think. Badly of myself because there's a sign in an inappropriate place, so if bylaws wants to grab it and pick it up and bring it wherever it needs to be. That's totally fine with me because, you know, as we all know that, you know. Yeah, nobody likes to see signs in in places where, you know, they don't need to be. So anyway, I am, I'm totally fine with that. And I would be happy to vote for that.
Thank you. Council Davis?
Yes, thank you. You know, the way I took this motion is at eight o'clock in the morning. The bylaws have a meeting. They guys, okay, today, if you see any signs that are out of place, pull them out and bring them home. And by the way, carry on with your normal line of duty and and your duties. That's the way I I took it. It's like, like Council Richter said, this is not, not a complaint. This is a simple thing where if they see a sign, if they see. David Davidson sign in the mini intersection, they can say, hey, that's it, pull it out, and I don't know about giving it back either. But anyhow, but I don't think what we're going to put, they're just going to share duties a little bit. If they see, if they see anything wrong, pull them out and bring them home. That's and that that will take place every morning meeting they have. Okay, today, we're going to do this, and by the way, if you see any signs, pull them out.
Thanks, yeah. We should really move this along. Uh, Council Ferguson?
Okay, I try to move it along a bit. It's it's funny, you know. It's some of the signs that we've put out over the years are the most legal signs in the world. We get a phone call from the residents. We just take it down. Could you please take it down, even though it's in the right spot? We've done everything right. They don't like it where it is for some because they figure that the property right from the road to their house is their own. But anyway, no, I, the one thing that's come out of the discussion tonight. Is regardless of signs, but is is a CPC. Is the fact that we've got a lot of a long list of things we could discuss at CPC and doesn't seem we've been we've been very successful with.
Let's stick with the motions.
CVC motions. That, well, I guess that was made. So, I mean, I don't know, whatever this council wants to discuss, we've had a lot of discussion. But that's my point, and the others have made it as well.
Thank you. Uh, Council Woodward?
Yeah, thanks. I'll speed this up too. I appreciate the the clarification. I think my expectations are somewhere. You know, you know, that, you know, you don't have to go that that bylaw will drive right by a violation unless there's a complaint on that specific sign. I'm trying to. Move that needle a little bit, but obviously, you know, there's a big township, there's lots of bylaws going forth, and. I'm not, I'm not expecting everything to stop to enforce the signage by law during an election, but I I think it is unfair to to impose by campaigns. To chase and do bylaw enforcement job for them and track down violations. Of course, if they're finding that, you can always file complaints on ones that have been there for a year or two, and I think that there's a balance there that I'm trying to find. Not not have people driving around for two weeks all they're doing nothing else and not enforcing other violence. So I hope that clarifies that my intent with it. Is that it shouldn't be dependent upon the public to file every little sign for every violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Long?
Yeah, well, you know what? There's very. The wording here, and this is a mistake I think that council has made makes very often. Oh, well, you get the idea. You get the idea. This says that council directs staff to enforce enforce. So that means, you know, I guess we're going to have to hire some more people or whatever, but I think I I talked earlier that that happens already. First of all, we've reduced the the timeframe that we're having signs out there, so that's going to probably move a lot of this hanky panky stuff that everyone feels is going on. I didn't see much of it. But maybe staff could comment. Don't they do that already? And so why would you need this? This motion actually says that we're going to go out there every day. Perhaps. Staff, please answer that, your worship. Thank you.
Mr. Back?
Thank you, your worship. The the motion as it stands is simply directing to enforce, including with complaint driven, so. I I guess I would have to say there's going to be some reasonableness used in terms of the interpretation and process. The 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 realities of the situation are, yes, there are some resource complaints and constraints, but. It would change the tenor of our approach in that where there is something that is seen, it will be processed, and likewise, if there is a complaint, it too will be processed.
Okay, I will call a question. All those in favor? And those opposed? Council Long opposed, it carries. All right, rock it on to N four. Counselor, okay, I'm just going to wait a minute.
I'm going to step out into the penalty box yet again. Thanks.
All right. For that to happen. Okay. Uh, so Council Richter has reconsideration of this too on the on the docket tonight. I just want to get a clarification from Ms. Bauer. Uh, the motion, it's seconded, there's no discussion, there's a vote, is that correct, Ms. Bauer?
Yes, the motion for reconsideration does not have discussion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, can I just ask for a clarification?
Yes.
In asking for the reconsideration, I did not want to reconsider receiving the report, just the two motions.
I, Ms. Bauer, I believe that'll be in order with it, because did we divide it or at the time, or how's that work? Maybe you can help me. Motion one, motion two.
Generally, when placed for reconsideration, we put the whole item back for reconsideration, but I can see where the report. Does not need to be part of this, so we will just remove that part.
Okay.
Well, wait a second, point of order. We can't change the rules here. If you're reconsidering the the motion, you're reconsidering.
So it's there's two ways we go with this. Uh, Council Richter, to move the whole thing, we can quickly go to the receipt, clear that off, and and then move on to the.
Okay, I'll move the whole thing.
Okay, so is there a second or to the reconsideration? Council Arneson seconds it.
There's. I know, no discussion, but a vote in favor of the reconsideration. Put it back on the table. Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, all those in favor of reconsideration? And those opposed? Okay, um, Council Whitmarsh, Council Kuntz, Mayor Froze, Council Long opposed, the reconsideration fails. So move on to, we'll wait for Counsel. Woodward to come back in the room.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, could the, who was opposed to that?
Uh, Mayor Froze.
Yeah.
Council Whitmarsh, Council Long, Council Kuntz. Uh, if you don't tie. All right, we are on to N five. Uh, Counselor Long, same process. You have the four.
No, I'll I'll move reconsideration.
All right, is there a second or? Council Davis seconds it. Call the question. All those in favor? And those opposed? Council Woodward, Council Ferguson, Council Arneson, Council Richter opposed, Council Davis opposed. Okay, that motion fails. All right, we move on to. I just put forward of the business.
Sorry, could I just have a recount?
The reconsideration failed. Um, Ms. Bauer, could you please provide the? Those who were in opposition?
Uh, actually, I was going to ask for recount as well.
Okay.
Counselor Woodward, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Davis, and Counsel Richter.
That's what I.
Yeah, that's it. That is, that's fine. Thank you.
Is that, yeah, is that correct?
Those were opposed, yes?
Yes, I'm not seeing anybody say they weren't, so. Council Davis, you look puzzled.
Yeah, okay, no, I just, I, no, I'm okay.
You were opposed, right?
So it fails.
Yes, I was opposed.
So we move on to P one, IT protection against threats. Where, Council Richter?
Uh, yeah, I wasn't expecting to get here this quick.
Hey, we're getting.
We're finally here.
Yeah, I I'll move the motion that we uh ask staff uh to provide information on the need, cost and scope of work regarding regarding implementing protection against ransomware.
All right, uh second by councillor Long and discussion. Uh I think this.
Yes. Yes, what what is prompting me to ask about our own protections is the increase that we've seemed to be seeing. Particularly in the U.S., but we've also had incidences in Canada against municipalities. Um I I just want reassurance that we're in a good position and it's not gonna happen to us.
Yep. It's uh happening all over. I appreciate that. Uh we're more and more large corporations, governments are being hacked and uh these people are costing an awful lot of money. So I know our staff are already looking into this. Uh this certainly just gives them direction from the council, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? And and opposed? Carries unanimously. Councillor Whitmarsh, P two.
Uh yes, um I think um I think most people have read it, um so I won't I won't read it, but this is to. Um this was to ensure that we are.
Do okay, do you want to move it first, councillor Whitmarsh?
Sorry, yeah, I will move it.
Is there a second or councillor Arneson? Okay, now I'll go ahead and speak to councillor Whitmarsh.
Sorry, thank you. Um yeah, the the uh the the purpose of this is to ensure that we move in a timely manner on getting the report back from staff. On uh the implications of the tree protection by law recommendations from T-PAC. And uh so uh held at the last meeting, uh it maybe wasn't totally clear on when that would occur. So I wanted to make sure that it was done in a timely fashion because T-PAC is interested in having a decision made uh before the summer break if possible. And so because of that, to try and keep it in in moving forward, um this motion asks staff to return uh back uh with us on on the June, sorry. Where do I have it here now? On the Ju- July twelfth meeting that they would, we would have the report back to us in time. That we could then make a decision by the July thirty first meeting um on the uh recommendations from T-PAC. So I that's the reason for moving it.
Great, thank you. I see no discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Uh councillor Richter, P three.
I have to turn my mic on here. Uh yes, I will move the motion, uh which is that um. We require a public hearing for resigning application one zero zero five eight nine bylaw five seven one seven to allow for maximum. Public input and further that the public hearing be deferred until such time as. A full public hearing can be accommodated in person at the Fraser River Presentation Theater theater if such a deferral is needed. I swear.
Is there a second or? Councillor Davis, thank you. Uh I'd like to move division. Can I get a second or for division? Councillor Davis, uh call the question on division. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Uh so we'll start with the first part. Um I just wanna clarify from staff, this is our current. Process uh on the on the first paragraph, this was to carry. For public hearing. That there would be per it would be using Zoom and electronic means. Maybe Ms. Bauer could uh just comment or answer my question.
In this case, as I understand it, there is not an OCP associated with it, so it would not require a public hearing.
But but.
Unless directed by council.
Sorry, but if we do require a public hearing as uh the first paragraph of this motion.
Yeah.
It would fall under our current.
It would have to be done under the current current method because we're not allowed at this point to have large gatherings.
Okay, thank you. That's that's all I need. Thank you. Okay, uh councillor Woodward.
Yeah, I'm gonna direct everybody to the first page of the staff report. Uh you know, completed the firing, that staff, the other is to proceed with a written submission opportunity. So um if I keep hearing about a Zoom meeting um at at a council meeting, but. It's been pretty clear to me from the beginning that this has only been about, you know, proceeding with a written submission opportunity, so. I don't think the first part proceeds unless we vote to make it proceed. Can I get clarification on that? Cuz I think there's a lot of confusion about that tonight.
Yeah, that's that's I believe, yeah, I'll get Ms. Bauer, but I believe this. Would then go further than what the report says to allow the type of public hearing that we had tonight where the public can come in electronically. Uh Ms. Bauer, can you confirm that?
Yes, that is correct.
Yep.
Okay, so I I uh I just wanted to clarify, yeah, so we would be going a step further. Um and I just wanted to clarify with Mr. Backen if he has any concerns about that.
Backen.
Uh no, your worship, this would be sufficient uh as it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh we got next councillor Long.
Well, I'm sure confused. I mean, I I don't I I don't think this is a problem per se because we had people come Zoom in tonight and that was fine. Um but this must mean that councillor Richter's moving first and second if we're gonna hold a public hearing.
Oh, this would be in in case there was, I think.
Wow. Oh, in case that well, how do you how do you get a public hearing? You have to give it, you have to give it first and second reading. So is that what's happening here? If so, I'll I'll make that amendment that we give it first and second reading and hold a public hearing.
No, I think we can't do that. This is just in case, so I think it's opposing first and second passes.
That's very strange.
Do it now, we could do it at first and second, it's the same thing. All right, I'm gonna move on. Councillor Richter.
Uh yes, um so I'm glad that um that Ms. Bauer uh indicated that. The purpose of the first part of the motion is uh to identify that it would be a Zoom public hearing, not just written submissions. I think that's important. I think that this particular application is of high uh interest to the public, particularly the public that lives out in that rural area. And um while Zoom is not the best, and that's why I put in the the second option. That we defer until we're allowed to hold an in-person public hearing. I just want to remind council that um the last application pertinent to this particular area. Uh was uh two thousand and fifteen, I believe, and there was a very, very strong. Public output or and public input uh on that uh that particular. The open house as well. I don't even think it got to public hearing, but I just wanna make sure that there's public input here.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh councillor Whitmarsh.
I'm certainly supportive of a public hearing, um and I think we need to do that. Um I'm wondering if there should be an amendment that does indicate that it's in a public hearing after first and second reading or is that just assumed?
I believe it would be, uh Ms. Bauer, yeah, that's a good question. I would believe it'd be after first and second reading in the case.
Uh the public hearing would have to occur after first and second reading.
Okay, so that's assumed, so we don't have to make that in the wording. Um and this is a public hearing that includes both written submissions and Zoom uh possible Zoom uh presentations.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh councillor Ferguson.
That's just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's just important to note that we follow through with the public hearing uh as being indicated by the clerk. And I think uh if we have it right after first and second, that's fine too. We follow the process and procedure. And we involve the public and that's important. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh councillor Long, your hand is up to your speaking.
So I'm speaking for the second time, and I mean, uh to me, this is this is not. Uh a very fair procedure that's being asked for. We should be treating all applicants the same. We had some. Uh we've made we've made a policy that there's no OCP amendment, there isn't a requirement for a public hearing. We are getting written submissions. There's nothing stopping people from writing. In fact, I've been getting emails extensively on this and it hasn't even. There hasn't even been an announcement that the first and second's given and I'm getting all kinds of emails, so there's plenty of input. It can be in writing, there's nothing wrong with that. If we have a policy, we need to follow the policy. And to to do one offs like this, I think is very dangerous for council. Certainly, up to council, I suppose, to do these things, but I don't think it's fair at all. I mean, you look at the some of the other things that we've been dealing with and and for for some reason, these rural lands are so much more important than everything else. I think everything in the township is important. In fact, if you wanted to weigh the importance of it, I wonder how many thousands of people live around some of the housing. Uh uh applications, townhomes, condominiums and so forth in the Willoughby area. Today was one in Willoughby. Um that that there very many more citizens are affected by the development than this particular one, which is out in the rural lands. It's consistent and the report talks about it being consistent with the uh the intent of the rural plan. So council, I think we're treating this very differently than others and I think that's inappropriate. Uh it might be exposing us and I will not support it.
Thank you. Councillor Richter.
Yeah, uh this is very different than the other ones because in the other ones, uh we've never had. Four thousand and eighty-three trees being proposed for removal to accommodate thirty-nine houses. Show me where that's ever occurred in Willoughby. It never has. And yet we're going to do this in rural Langley. In an area that's got a lot of wildlife, that's got a very distinct rural character. Uh like if you're gonna take four thousand and eighty-three trees, uh forty-four point five acres for thirty-nine homes. And this is before we've even finished with our tree canopy protection. Uh a management strategy like this is not right. I'm sorry, four thousand trees is a flag for me. And I think the public needs to know that this is what's being proposed here.
Thank you. Uh councillor Woodward.
Yeah, I I I'm actually kind of amazed that we debate the merits of public hearings now. Um you know, I I value them. Um I I value, I just value them. I think they're good. Um I think on this one. You know, it it warrants public hearing, um and I I I don't even know if I'm allowed to say that anymore. Uh so you know, I think for me, I think that uh I support this and especially if the conditions that are currently sitting on first and second remain. I don't find this unreasonable, um and I and I look forward to the process uh with the public input. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Davis.
Really fast, um public hearings have to happen and COVID has kind of thrown us for a loop. Let's get back on track and uh I'm gonna vote for this, but uh we just gotta get over this COVID thing. We shouldn't even be talking about whether we should be having a public hearing. It's uh it's the public's opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Arneson.
Ah yes, thank you, your worship. So I'm very supportive of the public hearing, uh particularly. I think the factual basis of this is different and that's part of our job is to be able to distinguish between applications. And I certainly agree with councillor Richter. We I've not ever had any kind of proposal that's come before me. Where there's thousands of trees at the very time that we're talking about tree canopy protection. And I actually am very bothered by the fact that this is going forward under these prob. Answers, so I couldn't say enough about how much I want to hear from the public because my last recollection of this proposal is. It didn't, the prior proposal for this same uh area of land did not go forward, and I think that was largely based on the public input. And I don't see that this is necessarily something that we want to advance, especially in light of climate action plans and other uh policies that have since arisen. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. We're just talking about the public hearing. Okay, um I'm gonna call the question.
Can I propose an amendment, your worship?
You want to propose an amendment? Okay, you can propose an amendment.
I I have to agree with everything that's been said, so we should change the policy so that all public hearings can have folks Zoom in.
But that's, you know, that should be a separate motion. Right now, we are moving towards that. You you actually have a, I think.
Yeah, well, I think that's.
Motion to move in that direction, so. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on this first part. All those in favor? And opposed? Councillor Long's opposed, carries. So the second part now. And this is public can be deferred until such time as a full public hearing can be accommodated in person in the Fraser River Presentation Theater. Uh I'll uh I'll just be quick, very quickly. I I'm concerned because of the pandemic, you know, we're hoping we're at the end of it, but who knows? Um this is something we've never experienced before, so I can't support this. I think the first part uh took us a long ways. So I see no discussion. I'll call the question on the second part. All those in favor? And opposed? So we got councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, councillor Long, councillor Coontz.
Mister Mayor, can you call number one to the motion and the vote again? I unfortunately, unfortunately, had a technical difficulty here.
So number one, um Ms. Bauer, can you provide the uh those who are opposed with what was?
The first motion uh was councillor Long opposed, so it was carried.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna call the question again on the second motion uh for councillor Ferguson's enjoyment. All those in favor? Of the of the second part, all those opposed? So it's councillor Whitmarsh, councillor Froze, councillor Long, councillor Coontz. Ferguson didn't indicate either way.
No, I she probably didn't out in favor.
Okay, so it carries.
My hand, I'm sorry about that.
All right, um move on to councillor Long, um P four.
Uh yeah, okay, whereas the Langley Community Farmers Market has moved from its location in the city of uh Langley to now the township of Langley. Property in the Derek Double Day Arboretum. And whereas the society provides a great benefit to the community in hosting this weekly market. Therefore be resolved that the Township of Langley Council provide a community grant of twenty-five hundred dollars to the society. To assist with the costs associated with providing this wonderful market on township property at the Derek Double Day Arboretum. I so move.
Okay, is there a second or? Councillor Davis, thank you. Uh councillor Richter or or councillor Long, did you wish to speak to your motion?
No, I think it speaks for itself. It's a fabulous market that could use some money.
Thank you, councillor Richter.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the last motion, if I may, and so the last motion carried?
Yes.
And the people who were opposed to was Mayor Froze, councillor Coontz, councillor Long and councillor Whitmarsh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh on this particular motion, I have a question with regards to the uh last paragraph. The twenty-five hundred dollars to the society to assist with costs. Okay, now what costs are we referring to? Are these operational costs? And if they are operational costs, are operational costs covered by our community grants?
Uh Mister Backen, can you speak to that? Or Mister Tullamello? Okay, councillor Long, we'll get staff. Um is there Mister Tullamello is here also?
How did staff know? Okay.
Your worship, the um I'll start. Mister Tullamello can chime in the. The challenge we have with the uh grants are they are to be for events or for capital. Uh this case would be under the event category. And we do not ordinarily provide for operational funding. Much of it depends upon how they actually characterize their request. If their characterization is for an event and it has some operational components, sometimes we can provide. Some assistance if it's characterized whoever is being operational to support their ongoing operations without a specific event in place. That generally doesn't meet the criteria. So in this case, it's really a matter of interpretation. That being said, council has an overriding jurisdiction on these matters and they can look at it and characterize it as they see fit. And this is simply a request that we uh paid them twenty-five hundred dollars effectively for the farmers' market, so it's uh it's up to the discretion of council. Mister Tullamello, does that cover sufficiently?
It does. Nothing more to add, Mister Backen.
So uh just to clarify then, um should this be coming out of grants or should it be coming out of council contingency? I mean, I'm not opposed to the farmer's market. I'm glad that it's been relocated. It is a wonderful thing, but I'm just wondering if it should be coming out of council's contingency.
Mister Backen, is there funding in the grant program left over or?
I'd ask Mister Tullamello the funding left on the grant program. Mister Tullamello, do you recall?
Yeah, through your worship to uh councillor Richter, there are funds still that are available through the uh community grants program.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the question on P four. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh councillor Woodward.
Yeah, I'll uh I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second or?
I'll second it.
Councillor Richter, um councillor.
Very quickly, yeah, very quickly. Um I think that uh this seems appropriate to me. Uh. These vacancies have been around. I've been talking to staff about this for a while, so I thought I'd bring it to council's attention. Uh these vacancies have been around for a long time. Uh they've actually been going up, not down. Uh we continue to fund officers, which is all we can do, and I'm not looking to to beat up on anybody. I'm not looking to criticize anyone. I'm just looking for a written explanation on uh what's causing the the persistent vacancies. And what the plan is to do about it, what timeline we can expect them to be filled. That's that's all I'm really looking for is some written communication. Uh to communicate with us on what seems to be a a chronic problem. Thanks.
Thanks. All right, uh councillor Richter.
Yeah, I just wanna say, um actually, I think this motion is very timely, given that our new superintendent was introduced to us tonight. We'll be coming forward to uh uh make a report to council in the next hopefully one to two months, although I hope it's not two months. I hope it's more like one month. So uh yeah, I think getting an update on this would be an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Davis.
I think also, very timely, we just met the top, and I have an issue. It seems like we have, in the last two, last two budgets, we've got more please coming, but then we kind of prolong them ourselves. So, um, we don't seem to get around to getting them there because we're, we're trying to make the bu- budget balance, as we're kind of prolonging them. But you know what? That's just my opinion and I'll save that for another day. So, um, I'd like to, I'm gonna support it. Let's, let's have a look at it. It's a good thing to do.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Well, we're doing the best we can. This is not a new anomaly. This is something that's been happening for many years and it's because of the lack of recruits, your worship. You probably know more tha- tha- about this than anybody. It's not like we're, there's anything being, happening here that's stopping it. It's just the way it is. Now, things are changing. I don't know what's gonna happen in Surrey. If the, uh, that, that change finally happens, there'll be lots more, uh, potential personnel available to us. Uh, I, I don't, I don't, I, I think the, the, uh, OIC, who we met this, seems like yesterday. It probably is almost soon. It's gonna be, but he's gonna come to us and, uh, and have a meeting, uh, uh, as Counsel Richter said, let's get that sooner than later. And that's a question we can pose to him and, uh, and I'm sure there's, there's a good explanation. So I, I guess we're gonna get the information one way or another, but, uh, uh, I, I'm not terribly surprised that this is happening because it's been happening for years and I don't know as a memo is going to fix it.
All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Long opposed, it carries. Thank you. Uh, is, okay, we, um, did our close already? Is there any other business? Counsel, Counsel Richter.
Yes, so I have, um, some items, uh, from the items distributed list that was sent to council on June 24th. I'd like, uh, uh, to thank staff very much for the, uh, update on the playground slides at ACUCC. That was item 16. Thank you very much. Item number 23 on page 48, um, which concerns, uh, the fire suppression discharge report. I was wondering if a copy of this could please be sent to the Yorx and Watershed Group as well as LIPS. Would that be possible?
Mr. Backen?
Yes, your worship.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 25 on page 52, uh, concerning Telus Fiber Optics. I have a concern about this because we get repeated emails from the public telling us that Telus has told them that we're not doing our job allowing them to let fiber optic in, yet our staff are continually responding, no, we are doing our job, it's just Telus isn't doing their job. So I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, and I guess this is a question to you, uh, is it time for, uh, council, yourself in particular as council's representative spokesperson, to reach out to the senior levels of Telus and request their reps to stop spreading misinformation on fiber optics to the public?
Yeah, I know our staff have been responding to Telus over the years because we keep hearing this. Mr. Backen, maybe you can just provide some background as I know this keeps coming up and staff to staff, uh, the message gets out there, but I don't know who's passing on, if it's a contractor or who it is if it's Telus or if they have a contractor who's misinformed.
It's a bit unknown, your worship. I mean, uh, we know it comes from many sources. It's not just one. We're not sure why it's persistent or why management hasn't discontinued it. One would appear, uh, maybe it's only a perception that because they want enhanced wireless service in the area, that, uh, without doubt, they're not advancing the fiber optics as quickly as one would, uh, want. That, that's a perception. Who knows if it's true or not? Perhaps the issue here though is merely to invite senior management to come and, uh, have a presentation to council and explain how this is continuing to, uh, allowed to continue and, uh, when we don't believe that to be the case.
Now, is that something we need a motion for, Mr. Backen? Cause I'm happy to put this on. These complaints from the public are based on misinformation and are using up very valuable staff time when there's no need for this. So maybe we should ask them to come and present to us.
So your, your worship, perhaps just because of the topic, staff could actually help drafting a notice of motion that would actually explain the situation and when it's sent off to Telus with the request, uh, they would understand the background too. That might be one a way that we'd actually get a more efficient request that they attend.
Okay, I'm happy to sponsor that motion, Mr. Mayor, for the next meeting. Does it notice a motion?
Thank you.
Okay. Item number, uh, 26 on page 53. It starts there. It's a rather long and involved, um, series of discussions between our staff and a local property owner with regards to a soil deposit permit. And I'm wondering, it has, has staff spoken directly to the owner of the business? Like this, is he fully aware of the requirements that are outstanding?
Perhaps Mr. Seppi, if he's, uh, if he's still here, he could comment.
Uh, your worship, yes, as far as I am aware, staff has communicated with the, uh, the owner, uh, on more than one occasion to outline the requirements of the process.
Okay, because he, he seems to be very frustrated that he can't go forward with his business because we're blocked. All right, um, well, if, um, if staff could please, um, sorry, there's an, if people turn their mics off? If you're not using it? Yeah. Backen, uh, the mayor, of course, you know, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Long. Yeah. Okay, is it still excellent?
Yeah, uh, it is.
Uh, Counselor Ferguson, can you turn your mic on?
Counselor Ferguson.
Yes, excellent, okay. Item number 30 on page 66 concerning motorcycles and speeding on Billy Brown Road. I can understand that this is a concern because that's a high density area with a lot of pedestrian traffic. And can something please be done about this? Could we refer to the RCMP for monitoring?
Yes, we can do that, your worship.
Thank you.
Okay, and my last item, Mr. Mayor, is item number 31 on page 67, uh, with regards to, uh, noise pollution from planes. The person writing the, uh, email believes that the planes are flying outside their designated flight paths. So could staff please investigate and report back, uh, to council on whether or not the, the, the flight zones are being ignored?
Thank you. I think, um, I could refer to the airport manager.
Your worship, the, uh, the situation is I, this is what I'm thinking of. I think that, that process is undertaken, but we can confirm that, that they are flying within the appropriate zones. The issue, I think, is more of the zones and the impact of the airport on the surrounding area, but we can confirm that.
Okay, and the other question I had relative to that, um, is, I know from past experience that there are certain properties that have covenants on them, uh, in the Murrayville area, that they are in the flight path of the airport, and I'm wondering if his property is one of those with the covenant, so.
Okay.
Okay, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your patience in hurting us for this marathon meeting today. Well done, sir.
Thank you. Counsel Long, I think you.
I have a notice of motion, uh, whereas the state of provincial emergency over the COVID pandemic is likely to lift over the next couple of months, and the Township of Langley will need to adjust its bylaws in regards to council meeting procedures. It resolve that staff look at our procedural bylaws to allow in-person and online participation from the public, staff, and council members. Suggest amendments to bring back for council's consideration so that the new procedures can be implemented if and when provincial state of emergency.[1773.28]